The recommendation was, and then the selectmen came back and said they don't want the whole thing.
Yes.
You can't add what you can take away.
Right. And again, that was last year, so we're -- this is...
What's different?
We just put that away, we're starting fresh again. That's how the process goes.
I just would hope that the board would not recommend to take 50 percent of the project away. The infrastructure that has to be put in, and then to the tax benefit that we would lose by losing 50 percent of the project, I just encourage you, when this property, if that property is going to be developed on that side of the road, you know the concerns, there'd be extra caution taken during that time. I encourage you to move it forward.
You know, you don't live next door, so that's easy for you to say.
We have another hearing here tonight, too, so I need to do this one.
Just for the record, that was not my proposal. My proposal was to amend it so that those parcels will be approved as commercial and semi-industrial.
I understand.
I had no intention of splitting up the overall project. I thought that was a good compromise, because it didn't sound much like everybody may be trashing back there anyway. So we would be no loss to the developer, but we'll be level with each other.
Actually, we can't do that, which is a good policy. I've heard everybody, so I think the board needs to decide where we're going with this.
Vote no.
Well, as I said, the vote on this is at town meeting. So given, let us make a statement. I think, given that this is a significant, this piece of property for the town, I think it also requires the vote of full town meeting to make the final decision. And again, that's full town meeting will vote whether to change the zone or not. This board will just recommend to put this article on the warrant for the vote, okay? So any vote tonight, just to put this on to the town meeting.
Excuse me. If we withdraw right now, then it won't go on the town meeting? Can we withdraw tonight from it?
No, it's already in motion, if you will. I mean, the point of town meeting is that very purpose that you want.
I'm confused. How is it in motion right now?
The selectmen can put this article on, and they have put it on, of their own volition. What the planning board's role is, the obligation the planning board has to town meeting, is to make a recommendation up or down on any zoning change. And that's what we're doing. It doesn't stop the process.
Okay. So when you say it's in process, though, are you saying that the planning board is going to approve, or are you recommending that...
We will make the motion, and we'll vote on it. I don't know how the board members are going to vote. But the vote tonight is to bring this to town meeting for a vote. It was a town meeting, in the instance.
The obligation of the planning board is to render a report to town meeting on whether the planning board as a board feels that it should or should not pass. It is on the warrant. It will be dealt with as you see it in print now.
But from our perspective, or some of us' perspective, is that we would like to have it recommended by the planning board that we don't approve.
That's a possibility, and that's what we, as a planning board, need to do.
Well, why don't you get the feedback from this group? Aren't we all here for that purpose?
Yes.
Why don't you ask the group here what they would like to see, then you can vote later on how you feel?
We've heard a number of people speak this evening. We've heard pros and cons of this whole proposal. So the point of this hearing is to listen to what people have to say. No, well, we have to vote on, we have to move this one before we can get to Mansfield Avenue. We're going to need to vote. I understand your concerns, sir. We're going to need to vote on it.
The selectmen have, you guys, the selectmen approved and pushed it forward. I'm just wondering if the newest draft that's being pushed forward, that is, the selectmen have collectively said, yes, let's go, if that, the newest draft is with Mr. Givlin's signature, or not?
The selectmen are pushing forward the process. All we're asking for is rezoning. We're not talking about site plans. We're not talking about anything else. So the whole plan is to bring it to all the townspeople here in the local decide whether or not, what they want to do. We don't have to, roughly 90 acres of land. So if the planning board decides tonight not to support this, the article is still going to be on the warrant. And I'm saying the selectmen will continue to support it, because usually in past history, if the planning board doesn't support it, we kind of back off, too. But on the other hand, the finance committee's going to be involved in it, and then the town meeting is going to have the final vote on it. So as of right now, we're talking about rezoning of parcel land. That's all we're talking about. We're not looking at what these guys are going to have to deal with later on, as far as site plans and conservation and all this other stuff. We're not involved in that. So again, we're asking...
But you guys voted, but you guys have voted collectively to say yes, thumbs up. Was that with Mr. Givlin in his dealings with Condy? It was. So it's not a new draft since Mr. Givlin has been gone?
No.
Okay, that's my question.
Can I just ask, will you give your vote, will you say why you're voting that way, or you don't have to?
Well, I can ask the board to offer an opinion, or offer an opinion, so, sorry, offer a motion.
Right. It's not required.
It's not required. If somebody wants to say why they want a question, the board has any opinion on this, it's totally acceptable. So just...
From my perspective, obviously, I've heard lots of comments, more one way than the other. There's pros to this recommendation, or this proposed solution that would benefit the town, for the selectmen, for Mr. Eunice, for some of the folks that spoke here. From my end, I would recommend that we would still move forward with it, and let it go to town, and let the town have their say, have their recommendations, and vote accordingly.
Personally, I also agree. I understand this is a very difficult vote. Emotionally, I mean, I don't, no, I'd like to see the open land there, personally, but I understand also the benefit of the town.
What I have investigated is that I just...
At this point, I think the board needs to make a motion, vote on it. This will go to town meeting. Everyone's welcome, obviously. Go to town meeting, have your say, your votes. One amended on the floor, that's your prerogative at town meeting. But I think this needs, to me, I think it's important enough for the town to go forward to a larger venue than at the town meeting.
That's going to happen anyways, right?
Correct.
So we're asking you to render an opinion, not just, let's go forward and vote on it at town meeting.
That's their job. I'm telling you, I think it's worth going forward to town meeting and vote on it, and avoid additional discussion about it. That's my personal opinion. But at this stage, we really need to close the public hearing.
Basically, whatever you said tonight didn't matter.
Each one is an independent public hearing, so we have to handle the public's form first, and then move on to Mansfield Avenue. So we have a motion in the second to close the public hearing on the public's form.
What a surprise!
We haven't voted, I know there's a motion.
Please stick around for Mansfield, we could use your support.
I live in a reservoir.
He's next to me, I'm 23.
Could we just have the discussion in a moment? I feel I owe these people, and that's my issue, as to how I'll vote. The way we're elected, the planning board or not, elected by districts, we're elected to represent what we think is in the best interest of the entire town. I appreciate your sentiments, as in many cases nearby of others, but I'm also appreciative of the fact that we're looking at an override request. That's all it is, 2.2, even the office is looking at it. As someone mentioned, they've been in town 43 years. I've been in town a little longer than that, since deception. And we talked about, it was also talked about Route 140. Many of these same conversations took place back then. No one wanted to touch Gray Woods. No one wanted to have an access road into 140, into Gray Woods, to have an large industrial plant. And what we ended up with is what we have now. I was also here before 495 was built. The day that 495 was ultimately built and opened, this discussion tonight was put into motion 40 years later, but we're at 495 and a major state highway. Things are going to happen now. I'm not saying I'm happy about it, it's just the reality. And if in exchange for that happening, we get residential development that's imposed to our tax base, I got elected to advance the cause of the entire town, and I will stand how you folks feel. I just wanted to tell you that in advance. I feel an obligation to do that.
But any of you guys live near the impacted area?
No, but you don't live near where I'm impacted. We're all impacted by something. I just, again, before I vote, I owe you that, so that's that.
I vote no.
So we have a motion to, can you hold it in a second? Can you give a second?
Yes.
Okay. Your motion, in a second. I'll take a vote then. Mr. Duran?
Yes.
And we'll also vote yes. So, town meeting is...
I vote no.
But not in front of my house.
Right next to John.
So, he's 25.
I'm 23.
He's 25.
You're right next to him.
I'm the one who ran down to that, the last one.
I'm 23.
I'm 25.
You're right next to him.
I'm the one who ran down to that, the last one.
I propose that we postpone it.
But not in front of my house.
Right next to John.
So, he's 25.
I'm 23.
He's 25.
You're right next to him.
I'm the one who ran down to that, the last one.
We're in the first one.
Don, I think this is...
I guess I'm going to raise it.
We're going to start the Mansfield Avenue.
They can continue this another night.
They give you bits out.
So they're able to build before that.
What is the...
What is the...
Start the hearing.
Open the public hearing, propose only Article 22, Mansfield Avenue resulting, 33 parcels, approximately 120.7 acres, commercial, your residential 42 village commercial, along a portion of Mansfield Avenue, Reuben Street, Robinson Lane, and residential.
I hope you have...
He's even above.
So just to introduce this really quickly, we're talking now about the Mansfield Avenue proposal, and that's 33 parcels.
Ladies, please, would you mind?
33 parcels at approximately 120 acres.
I hope so, too.
It's a mixture of commercial.
He's leaving, though. I need the support.
With one parcel residential 40 that is owned by the town, that will also change to village commercial, along a portion of Mansfield Avenue. You're probably familiar with the aerial view of the area, this is a rather... This is the proposed language. I apologize, it's kind of small. It's a zoning draft language that was sent out to all of the others. It includes 33 parcels that are listed, and as you get into the board, in their attached review. A map showing the current zoning. Again, this is a bit of drafty map, but it shows that the commercial district that is in front is the, the darkest parcels are the ones that are happening out within the zone to all village commercials. So we're talking about commercial to village commercials. And on some of the parcels, there's a split parcel, such as E's, and the residential component at the back of the property would not be changed. We're just talking about the commercial components. And then the one town-owned parcel is that small brownish one to the right. This is showing the flood zones, the AE regulatory floodways in green, that's the FEMA flood zone. And then this is showing the wetlands, and the hatching is the area of critical planning concern, you know, community. And wetlands are showing.
Can we get some dimensions to the wetlands?
So from my report, which I've given to the board, it outlines what the properties are, and describes them. The 33 parcels in question are occupied by residential homes, commercial, and retail uses. We have an attached letter from the Town of Norton Conservation Agent that the proposed area has significant natural resources. And parcel 225 has been identified in the open space and recreation plan as a priority parcel for preservation and recreation. The board of selectmen fully support this proposal. There was a public records request made by Abad Greg Vincent, who is a lead designer in the audience, regarding the zoning of the area and after the board's first time records. And we'll be joining that for the time of Mr. Vincent, and it was confirmed that zoning has existed since 1995. So we would recommend that the planning board conduct their review of benefits and detriment to this proposal, as we have for the other two that we've heard tonight, and recommend an approach to zoning that supports village-scale commercial development along Mansfield Avenue, implementing a sense of transportation, infrastructure upgrades, and improving in community access to open space, protecting natural resources, and increasing catch rate. So the policy is to take what's now commercial, and change it to, lot sizes stay the same, and then the lot sizes in commercial is 18,000 square feet, the minimum lot size in village commercial is 18,000 square feet. What village commercial does allow is mixed use. It allows residential, and it will allow some, you know, depending on the lot size, you could have a condo or that type of development. That type of development is now not allowed in village commercial. Village commercial zones, what we have on West Main Street, center of town, do you have a mix of residential, commercial uses? It does have some additional design requirements as part of the site plan review.
Well, I have several questions. I'm in a butter to the last lot that is designated on here, on the south.
On the west side?
Yeah. And, first of all, and I guess it's already been determined that what's on the assessor's cards doesn't mean anything, 90 percent of the lots that are south of the reservoir crossover appear to be R60.
That's true.
So why are you saying that they're now commercial, when you're going to change them?
They are being commercial since they're used to establish the town. Do you want to research that?
Yes, I put in an official request to find out what was going on. Because like, I don't know you, but everybody on Reservoir Street, back in 1978, when this was zoned commercial, none of those houses existed. But by his due diligence, all us owners, and you've heard another gentleman tonight who got caught up, went to town to find out, gee, who's my neighbor, and what is the zoning on it? And before I signed this purchase agreement with the Realtor. So, you know, like you, like John, like Jane, everybody, they went down to the assessor's office to pull up a data sheet card, and it says R60, R40. Is that Wheaton College owning on that property, and it's R40? Well, I've come to find out that, yeah, it was changed back to 1978 as part of a citywide rezoning map. Now, that said, it's been 39 years. Why hasn't the assessor's been updated? I mean, when you go to town, you go there. Now, I'm saying, well, it had to be done by hand, because gee, I got my first Apple computer in 1984. So, okay, it's computerized. Now, back then, it was zoned as R1 and R Roman numeral 2 was the zoning criteria for the town of Norton for residential. And when this was changed to commercial, they were still following the R1 hash Roman numeral 2. Now, in 1999, they changed it to what we have now.
Up there, in town meeting.
Town meeting, R40, R60, R80. So, gee, in 1999, somebody had to go into a database of assessors, now these are all associated with the assessor's map, this is the assessor's data of that property, on the map that everything is tied to. Gee, this says R40, so that means it hadn't been entered after 1999. But it's been commercial since 1978. Why did they correct it then? They've had two chances to correct it in the 39 years.
This is clearly...
But let me finish. These properties are attached, an assessor right here, to the assessor's map, which is attached to the assessor's data. Where you go in, and you get the square footage, and you get the page, and you get everything off of that data.
Clearly, I understand.
And this is not just these properties, but this is consistent throughout Norton, other places, where the assessor's doesn't mean anything. Now, I was told not even for tax purposes. Well, at one time, I don't believe there was, I believe there were separate taxes for commercial and residential. There were separate rates at one time, even going back to 1978.
Not in recent years.
Going back to '78, excuse me?
Not in recent years.
I'm talking to '78.
It hasn't been 21 years, that's all I can...
Well, I'm talking 39 years ago, it was. So you're going for tax up, when if you had just taken care of your assessor's relationships, you could have received, you're probably taxing these people wrong.
So, sir, the point of the hearing is to...
Yes.
...we've got a commercial zone, and changed it to village commercial.
The point is...
We're not changing any residential.
These are all listed as R60. This property is R60. This property's R60. This property's R40.
Were we having a debate, the assessor's fail cards all night, or are we going to talk about the zoning?
We have to tell them that the point is...
Well, I want to contest the maps as well. New zoning maps. How can you have a map? John, you had the dates on that.
The map has been...
The map has been, is approved and signed in 1979, but it's a 1983 map. Who signed the '83 map? Who signed those changes? Nobody. I mean, how are we supposed to believe these maps?
The zoning is always the...
How are we supposed to believe these maps? They're all different.
They've been posted in town hall with the zoning enforcement officer, or nobody's...
Which ones are real? The ones that are stamped? Who was on the stamp? The ones that are stamped are 1979. Then is it 550 feet, or some of these maps go by, say it's 425 feet?
As zoning changes, the map's been updated, and things are posted on the map.
I just think there's too many ambiguities, there's too much in the hearing. Until we got the proper and officiated...
This is what we're talking about. Commercial to village commercial. That's the point is here. Right, Miss Mune?
Yes. So, first of all, I'd like to know who proposed this. Whose benefit does it serve?
Yes.
It serves... Did you propose it? It's somebody who lives along here proposing.
Who's behind it? That's up.
This proposal came forward, we had a developer who's interested in these two parcels, and wants to develop those parcels with commercial businesses out front and residential up back.
All right, so, to us.
When we looked at it, we were planning for the future, and we said, well, why don't, we have a whole mix in that area. We've got homes, businesses, home, business. Why don't we rezone that whole area to village commercial, to make it what it's being used as right now?
So, my lot, which is not included in the change, does that mean that I can do whatever one can do with a commercial lot on my lot?
What lot are you...
Cars is not being changed, though.
Well, you're telling me that, I thought it was an R60. But you're telling me that I'm in that group that's below the last one that's been...
Can you point...
Which one, just stated, John? You're in the colored zone, you're commercial.
Okay. So, this is my lot here.
Yep.
Okay. My understanding is that 116, 127 is being, the proposal is to change it from commercial to village commercial.
Correct.
But these of the lots, mine, the next one, and the driveway for the third one, are still commercial. Is that correct now?
Correct, as far as we know, yes. But based on...
So if I want to put a load in, not that there's enough space, but I could do that.
Do we have to come with a special permit to the town?
You can try.
You could do that now.
Now that I know that I'm living, when I bought, when I bought the land, had the house built there, I thought it was R60. I thought all of this except for a few of the obvious, like the gas station, produce farm, and the auto mechanic place. And this was R40. So now you're telling me, and everybody else here who didn't know they were in commercial, in a commercial area, that if anybody could have come in and put in anything permitted on those lots that was not a house.
Under commercial?
Under commercial zoning guidelines, yes.
So, when it goes to village commercial, what...
What else can you do?
What, can you, is that, is that kind of a step?
Or what can't you do?
Explain where is village commercial. Is it commercial, village, commercial, industrial? Is that the way it works?
No, 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 other way.
Village commercial goes the other way, because it allows by right, house. And it's less intensive than commercial.
But, yeah. The next lot over for me, because village commercial, there could be a marijuana dispensary. Is that possible?
You can do that today. You have the right, as a commercial, you can't...
No, we have other zoning for marijuana.
I hope so.
To put some in industrial zones. They're not allowed in commercial zones. And they're not allowed in village commercial. Definitely not allowed. No. So village commercial makes it more residential than a commercial.
So think of it as residential, village, commercial, commercial, industrial, and the scale.
So why don't you just convert this part, this part that is clearly housing into residential, which is what it should be, and then convert the part up here?
We have that argument, the first one tonight, but...
I know that, but you have, you got four lots.
Right.
Here, you've got 33, is it? So you're clearly above your four.
So if it's commercial now... and the auto mechanic place, and this was R-40. So, now you're telling me, and everybody else here who didn't know they were in commercial, in a commercial area, that if anybody could have come in and put in anything permitted on those lots that was not a house?
Under commercial?
Under commercial zoning guidelines, yes.
So, when it goes to village commercial, what?
What else can you do?
What, can you, is that, is that kind of a step?
Or what can't you do?
Explain where is village commercial? Is it commercial, village, commercial, industrial? Is that the way it works?
No, 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 other way.
Village commercial goes the other way because it allows by rights, house...
Okay.
And it's less intensive than commercial.
The next lot over for me, because village commercial, there could be a marijuana dispensary. Is that possible?
Well, we have other...
You can do that today. You have to write as a commercial, you can't...
No, we have other zoning for marijuana dispensary.
I hope so.
To put some in industrial zones.
Pardon me?
They're not allowed in commercial zones.
Okay.
And they're not allowed in village commercial, definitely not allowed, no. So, village commercial makes it more residential than a commercial.
So, think of it as residential, village, commercial, commercial, industrial, and the scale.
So, why don't you just convert this part, this part that is clearly housing into residential, which is what it should be, and then convert the part up here?
We have that argument, that was the argument in the first one tonight, but...
I know that, but you have, you got four lots.
Right.
Here, you've got thirty-three, is it? So, you're clearly above your four.
So, if it's commercial now, village commercial is less intensive use.
Okay, and residential would be even less.
However, what's before us today is commercial or village commercial. Again, we're not changing the proposal that we're hearing on.
Can we get some of these exempted?
Yep.
And then go for commercial to residential?
Yes.
They will stay as commercial then.
Then they would remain as commercial.
They will remain as commercial.
Unless it's petitioned to be changed back to residential.
Your proposal...
Right.
Yeah, I think the poor man that got totally screwed up.
Okay, we can't, our story is all time.
Okay.
All right, someone else can comment? Oh, sorry?
I'm short, you have to go. Jane, 17 Reservoir Street. You know Bill Govea, a new in town, who's only been here for twenty-five years. Bill has served on committees for over twenty-three, I'm the volunteer for twenty. I'm suggesting that the planning board consider tabling this entire thing. We bought our property based on false information that Bill and I procured, we thought we were buying next to. We bought residential and residential surrounded us based on all the intensive looking that we did. So, I'm requesting that you table all of this. I think, I understand, that village commercial is the lesser of the evil than commercial. But I still think with all the false information that we have, and I'm just speaking for my family, that I'd like you to consider tabling all of this, much less, I'd like you to go further and bring it all back to residential because that's how, when I purchased our home, that's what it is, my understanding. We did a lot of research. It's not the first house we've owned in Norton. We do a lot of research before we buy. Can't speak to both of our Realtors, one of them is deceased, but we do so much work. I ask that you table all of this, even though I know village commercial is the least of the evils. So, I'd like you to bring it back at another time and table it now. Thank you.
You're going to detain her, just let her talk, just bring that up after?
What's that?
Are you going to bring that up after at the end of?
Uh, which?
For table?
Well, I want to hear. We're going to hear what I'm saying.
I'm John Shay, 25th Reservoir Street. I share the same pains Greg does, but I hope he'll not, he gets warmed up every so often, which is okay. He's probably as upset as everybody else is, and then it'll take a few minutes here. These maps were given by Tabitha, and pleasure and thank you. You did more in your short time than the process that did in a whole. What Greg was talking about in these maps, and I know these are the maps we read, but like this map right here, you have 1988 on. It says attested Edward something, town clerk, January 25th, 1979. Now, you just said nothing's been changed. This map has been changed three times.
Right, zoning has changed over the years.
Okay, so who attested to this map in 1988?
But that was at that point, and then it's been updated.
Eddie Smith.
Say again?
Eddie Smith.
But each time needs to change, time needs to be attested to?
By town meeting.
But in the article...
On the map itself, it should say amended X, Y, Z times.
Yeah, it says revised June 30th, 1983, revised May 2nd, 1988. So, what is the revision if no one's attesting? I'm confused right now.
It's the town meaning vote, I think.
In the front of the zoning bylaws, just so you know, the zoning bylaws, which not, doesn't always change the map, but I'm just, there's about thirty-five. So, each time there's a zoning change, the town clerk attests to, by virtue of the minutes of town meeting, the certified of town meeting, but that may not change the map. It may change what's allowed to be used, to be done in a zone, or it may change the residential requirement, but the map doesn't change each and every time.
Doesn't it say, "ask to be stamped"?
It gets stamped if the map changes. Somebody has to attest to the... This is what, some of the problem is, this changes on these maps. If you go back to seventy-eight, which is what started this whole thing, I'm going to say that this map isn't accurate right now.
Could I see that?
Yeah, please do, have a free, we got, she's got copies. If you look...
Is it 1988 now?
No, there's a bunch of them here, there's 1988, there's 1982, 1984...
But it's not 1940, so I'm just...
Right, what I'm saying to you is, we go through all these maps, we find these things, when was their commercial land backed all the way up to here? Some, how, do you know how far back your property goes? Did you probably go back?
I've only lived there for fifteen years.
But is it over five hundred feet?
Oh, we go, oh, you mean how far back to the water?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, it's, well, our driveway's twelve hundred feet.
Okay, that isn't that way. Thank you. So, you're looking at this line, can anybody in the planning board, or yourself, tell me when town meeting amended?
Five hundred fifty feet, two plus?
Well, it's much more because you said the driveway's twelve hundred.
I got outside of hundred and there's five hundred feet more.
So, you're looking at this, you have this buffer, which is in your paper right here that says it's five fifty, if I'm correct?
Right.
On those maps in nineteen eighty, it says four twenty-five.
Right, because these have changed.
Cool, when will they change? Because we're going to agree...
You'd have to go through each town meeting and see what was changed.
Oh, yeah, I've done that.
And we had to go all the way back to seventy-eight to find the maps are accurate. Now, we all agree that there's this huge confusion, lack of responsibility, which would be probably the best thing, upkeeping the assessors' map. We're walking an education from the town manager about where we're supposed to go and find this stuff. It's easy to find that out twenty years later when this is all jammed in your face. Not one of us ever knew to go to the building department and ask that. We were all taught by the salespeople, the next door neighbors, word of mouth, these people, I mean, I mean, it's the most heart-loving manner, you're all doing great job. We sit here yelling back and forth to each other because we're as confused as you are. You sat here at the last meeting when Greg said, "When was this land changed to village, to commercial?" You said, "In my time in the board," someone else said twenty-one years ago, you said twenty, did you say twenty-one?
He said near sixteen years, you've never known it to be resolved.
You had to go back to seventy-eight to find this. And we're trying to work in this together to find out a better answer, but even if you present this right now, can someone tell me when this was amended to make all their property commercial?
Excuse me also, if it was amended before, fourteen years ago, the manager had to go to the building department to get permits, to put my house up. And if I understand correctly, he couldn't put it off as a commercial land.
Well, zoning had changed though, fourteen years. Before, we had to zone.
No, no, this zoning change in seventy...
Wait, stop, sit down, wait, sit down.
How effed up that says?
Districts?
And tear the whole thing up.
There are changes to districts, you know, where on the map things are. There's also changes to the use table.
So, excuse me, but if there was a change made in the last fourteen years, shouldn't I have been notified?
No, we don't.
No? Shouldn't I change my plan from residential to commercial without notifying?
What I meant is that you were notified the same way you were notified today, that there was a proposed zoning change before town meeting.
Yes, and would we have received a certified letter?
But it could have been...
Look, there's another zoning change.
I know you weren't involved.
She built a house on commercial property.
But I need more.
It's supposedly commercial.
I'd like to hear it.
Let me, let me speak, your hat's a mine. Right, there were, we did a master plan, the late nineties, there was a zoning change after that master plan. It may not have, that's where we went from, you know, the R1 to the R-60, things got changed maybe 2000 at that point.
1999, June 7th.
Okay, so, and we also had zoning prior to the master plan, which was cumulative. So, if you had an industrial zone, it also allowed multiple uses within it, including residential, which is how John Scott Boulevard got developed to be residential use at that point. So, you could have, at that point, you could have been in a cumulative zone, which allowed that use. So, the use table sometimes changes, not necessarily the line on the map, which lists two pieces to the zone, okay?
So, somewhere in 2003, when my builder got the permit from the building department, I would assume that would come from, there was a permitted use of residential, oh, no, a residential building was allowed to be built on what was commercial?
Yes, the zone, town zoning was like that prior, when it was cumulative.
Go ahead, if I may, answer my own question first, we could put this in order. Where'd that go? Cool. When was this land, and if you can ask Tabitha, when was the, sorry, when was this land changed all the way to the water to commercial?
I couldn't tell you exactly when, from what I've reviewed on the plans from 1978, our maps show that the commercial district extended all the way to the water.
No, thousand feet. Read it right now, 1988's plan, in 1978's plan, it was a thousand feet to that side of the water. Where's the one, six thousand feet? I can't even zoom in because I have horrible eyesight, but that's a thousand feet.
So, if you were to use this graphic scale, it's on the...
One inch is four hundred.
Her driveway is twelve hundred feet.
Her house is beyond that. Yeah, but what I'm saying to you is, you have this painted all the way down. This is the first problem.
That's correct, so what's...
That is the current zoning.
Okay, perfect, now, when was the last time that plan was updated?
Current zoning?
Yep.
It was amended 2014.
Okay, so in 2014, because in nineteen, you said 1999, you made the whole town R-60?
No, 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 we did a zoning change.
On June 7th, 1999, they went from R, R1, R2, to R20, 40, 80.
Honestly, thank you, I love you, I thank you. So, in 1999, you rezoned the whole town, correct?
I mean, we...
Well, everybody right here says, like, what is her name?
Wendy.
Wendy will tell you that she has a residential, R-40.
R-60.
R-60.
This land parcel right here has a R...
R-40.
R-40. I bet you if we go through here and go through the tax base, and someone could find their four...
You go all the way up, they're all R-60.
Except for a couple. We, all we can do at this stage is deal with commercial zone, which we, is currently commercial today.
Well, here's the problem, you're dealing with something that we all believe isn't accurate. And we're sitting here right now trying to explain this to you. Not one of us in this room understands, have faith, or believe in what is in that or even confusion right down the east. Do you believe that we're a little off right now?
No, I mean, I'm having a hard time understanding the confusion because I look at this and it's clearly zoned commercial. Again, I can't quite read what this depth line is here, but here...
That one says five fifty back and forth.
That's the other side.
That's the other side. This one is a line down to a thousand feet from this triangle down along the water.
Right, so, but it's all commercial.
Is that what that means?
Yeah.
I haven't read any of these, but I mean...
But no, that's why I'm having a hard time understanding. Everything I've seen, except for the very first, the very first zoning map back in seventy-two, has a residential.
Residential, seventy-eight had changed.
Right.
In between seventy-eight and here, they went from four twenty-five to five fifty.
Right.
But nobody knows when it was, and none of these have been attested to.
Okay, but I guess, help me understand, let's, a couple things. Let's all agree that, although they give people heartburn, the assessors' maps, excuse me, the assessors' field cars, in terms of zoning, not applicable. That's a good one. I know it causes confusion, somebody can do that.
That's caused more than confusion.
Well, it is what it is. The only thing that is official are the zoning maps.
Causes a lot of people their life savings.
Again, I can't change that, I'm simply trying to get consensus to what we understand and what we don't understand. The assessors' maps aren't going to help us here. They may work, but they're not going to help. Everything I see on the history of this, other than the very first zoning map, has this as commercial. So, let's, for the moment, say that we can't find when the line went from four hundred on the upper part of that to five fifty. What does that have to do, how are you adversely impacted by changing what is now commercial to village commercial?
Well, I'll get to that in one second, but what you just explained to me, that her house was filthy legal.
No.
Well, that may... No, I'm not necessarily agreeing with you, but let's...
Well, you just said it's all commercial.
It is commercial, how did her house get built?
Well, but how does, how does... How did the planning board let it go by?
And the other adjacent houses? You're not talking just one house?
I'm trying to understand it, I apologize.
We had zoning prior, it was still a lot housing, it's a residential district.
When?
Is that still written in 2003 when she had her house built?
I don't know, I don't...
Well, we need to clarify that.
Well, no, the point is, it's commercial now, and what's in front of us is a change to village commercial. That's what's in front of us now.
All right, so what I'll say then, we'll go, so we take these, throw these out, right? We don't believe this assessment? Because they don't apply to us right now, right?
No, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, I look at this and it matches up to that.
Okay, cool, then I'll take your word for it.
No, I'm just...
I'm agreeing with it.
It's not my word, it's what I'm...
I'm agreeing with you. So, now you want to understand why I find this to affect us, please? When you sit here and look at all these people that are residential lots, residential...
They're not residential.
Well, they are, there's a house with a family.
It doesn't matter, that's the use.
Right.
We just went through some stuff on Eddie Street.
Yeah, I watched that.
That's all residential in terms of use, but it's zoned commercial.
Right, the guy, the guy came winning with that house.
And he went to the assessor's office like everybody else, he got warmed up.
If we are to establish, that's an exercise in brutality.
So, these are all commercial, so if I have the wrong verb, I apologize. So, these are all commercials, right?
We get four properties together, ten people to sign, we petitioned to rezone it back to residential.
We had the whole overland stuff, unbelievable amount of deer, coyote.
If they want a special town meeting, we get a hundred people to sign.
I understand that, you asked me why I believe this shouldn't be commercial village.
But it's commercial now.
Right, and we're going to try and change it over, correct?
Make it less commercial.
Make it less commercial.
Make it less commercial, allow residential...
Let's make it less commercial.
Yeah, village commercial makes it less commercial.
Well, it doesn't, it allows for more residential.
Allows for residential use.
Doesn't...
So, after all this utility, which is... We're supposedly, this is going to help us? This is going to help us? Well, they're saying that the commercial village would be better.
It would give you more use.
So, good, thank you.
Right, that's...
One quick question, I have a... Village commercial, all right, you say the village commercial is less intensive than commercial? All right. It seems to me that village commercial will allow for more intensive use of these properties. And that's what I'm looking for. Because if you're going to develop the front of it one way and the back of it something else, that's more developed than either. Perhaps, then it was left commercial.
That's that Wheaton property. See, I'm here at twenty-three, it's twenty-five.
The village commercial allows the residential use, the commercial does not allow residential.
Thank you, remember that.
So, still do whatever, whatever's commercial now is going to be commercial.
I got that thrown out.
But on the village commercial, you can have that use and residential on the same...
Right across from my house, but where's my neighbor's?
But the...
Still fighting.
The tendency is on the lot is everybody wants us.
So, and the other thing, I don't feel that...
It's not on a commercial strip.
The question was answered. What prompted the change?
The request to develop the property on the north there, that large parcel.
Okay, so, why is the area so much larger than that area?
The thought was that it makes sense to not, again, result in one parcel village commercial, but the village commercial is representative of what's there now, which is a mix of residential and commercial.
So, similar to what was done at the previous first hearing, when the residents of those three of the four lots did not want to see this, that in Florida, if a majority of these owners did not want to see this, would that be enough for the board to not stand behind it?
So which property are you owning?
I'm not a property owner. I live on Reservoir Street. And my concern really is the bottom of the... No, but I... This 1693, the bottom half of Reservoir Street. I don't want to see that turning into a village commercial.
Today it's commercial.
It's today it's commercial.
So without changing a zoning, somebody can go in, build special, apply for permit, build a commercial there today.
And my argument to that is no one's done it yet, but if it changed to village commercial...
No, no, no.
That might open more of an opportunity.
But according to the assessors, it's owned by Wheaton College, which doesn't pay taxes. The college pays taxes to the town?
From people in the audience that actually own a lot that's going to be rezoned.
I've never known a college education.
Now, which ones would be in the zone?
None of those people have spoken yet. So I don't know.
Yeah, I want to make a comment. I own the property, map 9240. It's the corner of the Smith and the Mansfield. So on the way on top of that corner. So, uh...
Across from the liquor store?
Pardon me? No, let's not zoom to the west liquor store. Too far.
Further on.
9240, the one on the... Really, the one on top?
By the karate place.
Okay.
The next karate.
Yeah.
No, you can't live on there. Which one? 9?
157 Metre.
157.
All right, sir, your property. Go ahead.
That's not my property. I own 9240. We bought it about six years ago, and we know it was commercial. Okay, so we went to the town, checked it, you know, we didn't go to assess. So we went to the building department. But they're not just the standard rules, right? The real estate agent tell us, right? I went to the town, double-checked on that, and it's a... It's a commercial, zoned commercial. We look at the commercial options, and we can't do anything with it. It's too small for a commercial. So we checked with the zoning board for other options, especially more commercial village. Because we were thinking of, we actually went to the, uh, uh, conservation process, and we actually was looking for building a dental office. Okay, so 200 square foot, you know, roughly dental office, so we went to the, uh... We went to the, you know, conservation, you know, all of that process to get approved. And but now we look at the, you know, the financials, it just can't... Doesn't work in terms of just pure commercial. And also, we were thinking of more... Commercial village makes more sense because we can have, you know, work office in the first floor and, you know, have a living space upstairs. So we went to the zoning board and checked, telling... Basically telling me is impossible, okay? So unless I do, you know, townwide to what all of them, so that property has been vacant, basically, for... Since we bought it, right? So and I fully support of this change, just because it gives a little bit more options. Because for me, to look at saying just putting a commercial in another area does not make sense, pure commercial, just, uh, but it's because of the karate next to it, and the street behind it is also residential, right? So if I put something more of a residential related in that area with a little bit of offices, you know, small offices, things like that, and a work, uh, make pretty well in that neighborhood. At least that's how we looked at it six years ago, when we looked at it. But we went to zoning board. At that time, you know, uh, I went a couple of times, different years, and checked it. And there's older gentleman last time I...
It's not... It's not part of the deals.
Right, right. And he said, impossible, forget about it. That basically told me, right? So we have left. Now, I know a couple of other properties because I checked with it. There's a property 9... 9238, that's actually, in the sense, if you look at it, there's a first floor business. Second floor is all rental apartment or living space, right? That's essentially village commercial that's just next to it, right? Then some other properties, you know, kind of a mix. Uh, I did also, in the past, looking around other commercial, kind of a zoned commercial along this line. Uh, but, you know, the houses itself, I went to the building department. They told me because of commercial, you can renovate, but you can't touch the house. Okay, so in terms of moving into, at least in my view, moving to, uh, village commercial, let any house owner to actually change the house structure. At least that's how I like to believe. I like to... You know, zoning board or somebody not understand that.
Right. That would be allowed by rights, so...
Right. Because otherwise, because I was more looking at say, oh, maybe I buy a house, then add extension to all of that, but they say, well, it's a zoned commercial. You can't do that for residential use. But with the village commercial, you got... I always believe that if I know that it was changed a couple of years ago, I may look something out of the property in that area. But, you know, if you are a homeowner, you actually own these today, it's zoned commercial, and if it moves to a village commercial, you actually have the more flexibility to make adjustments for your house. You know, you can turn out, rebuild the whole house. Same as with residential, no issue whatsoever. But with the currently zoning as a commercial, you can't do it.
Right. So with your current zoning, any existing residential use is not existing, non-conforming, and that's the point that you're speaking to.
Right. So that's how I look at this issue. I, you know, I fully understand all the issues. Everybody is talking about, you know, all the issues, you know, R40, R40, R60, all of that. Unfortunately, you know, the real estate agent, you know, may not always tell you the right information. He may want to the wrong department. At the end of the day, you know, I went through many of this, and, you know, you've got to go through the right department in the building, in the town hall, to find the right information. And these guys, they don't have a... Real estate agent, all of them, they are not responsible. At the end of the day, due diligence is all on us, unfortunately. You know, I got sucked into buying a piece of property, but I know it's commercial, but I wasn't sure what else my capability is. Because I look at the neighborhood, my next door, right? It's a village commercial in the sense that we can live on the first floor. I said, oh, that's probably something I can, I can, you know, look into. But then I go to the building department and says, oh, that's no longer billable, right? And told me that something was changed, right? So that's how... So for me, as an owner of a property that impacted by this, I fully support of the change, right? That gave me more flexibility in terms of looking at my property and, uh, and I'll look into, you know, move forward with this. Once it's changed, I'll look forward, you know, by project forward, something.
Anyone else who wants to speak, a property owner who wants to speak? Anybody else want to speak as a property owner?
Keith Silver, under 120 Plain Street, and I do own the land that Mr. Unis was talking about, the 20 acres of land. Uh, I spent in my family for over 100 years. We have it for sale right now. And we'd just like to put maybe a nice restaurant in the front and some townhouses in the back. And I think it'll look very nice, a little look in the water. I think village commercial is the way to go. I feel bad for the people that probably had residential, but right now it is commercial and I don't know how you're going to change it.
Yeah, we know yours was... Changed commercial in 2006.
Right. The same process?
But everything is commercial right now.
Go ahead. May I ask one more question? I'm sorry. Given that, for some reason, the line was drawn just above where my lot is. Could you explain how that happened?
It was there in 1988, or however it was.
No, no, no. The lot that... The first lot in the lower right corner that is, um, has a heavy border around it.
Yeah.
And then there are two more, plus a driveway, plus another bit of something that is commercial that you chose not to include in this. Could somebody explain to me why?
She owns this lot here?
No, the one that's right... No, not that one. The one just below. No, no, up a little bit. See the skinny driveway?
Yeah.
No, up, up.
Right between those.
Right there.
This lot right here.
I hope I can find my home tonight.
Why were at least the two... Why wasn't the whole section designated?
That used to be one whole lot.
This lot, this lot, this lot.
That used to be one whole lot years ago. You're touching four lots.
Yeah.
I think Chavis... Chavis something about it.
Why did you stop it here?
Yes, why does the proposal stop there and not include the entire commercial area?
You mean the lowest, the bottom parcel that's colored orange is not...
Yes, the section that is orange that is...
These three lots.
Does not have a heavy line.
Are not on the list.
Why are they not included?
And they will stay commercial if you don't include them, correct?
Apparently.
So if... May I address the group?
So I want to address the affected homeowners. This is other side of town. It doesn't affect me. From what I can understand, and like to get a clarity for the whole group here, uh, it sounds like the main issue at hand is the realization recently that what you thought was a residential lot is in fact a commercial lot. Is that fair?
That's right. Biggest one, yeah.
Um, to the board, the change of commercial... And I'm sorry, I imagine that concern is in regards to what you may be able to do with that property in the future, selling it as a residential, a lot and things of that.
How it affects the other people, or how it affects the other...
And so, sir, if I may, if I may, address the board, the change from commercial to the village commercial works to alleviate those concerns, correct?
Yeah. I think that's why I came to the... So we'll also make a pedal.
We just have one question. How you guys highlighted the map?
Oh, that was an... That was an address.
That's an address?
That's an address.
Okay. Because we are the owners of this property right here. 85, 1683. And our only concern is if we switch from commercial to the village commercial, we are commercial and we're special permitted industrials, will that affect us as a business? It can always special permit. And so then we would need to know that again to...
Your grandfather.
Your grandfather.
Yeah, it would be any existing use is grandfathered in.
Okay.
So you'd be grandfathered in.
For them or forever? Like if they went to sell the land, does it go with them?
Well, if we sold it as the same usage, we could sell it as the same usage. But if we sell it and we don't continue that usage...
Right, right. You have to consider, correct?
So I'm really sorry, but I don't think I got an answer to the question as to why the entire orange section was not included.
The language was drafted from parcels from the last year's language?
Maybe that was... Perhaps it was.
I don't know. Is any... The selectmen, can anyone speak to that?
It came from last... I could have come from...
The intent was to include those lots, I will tell you that.
So will they be?
We... This is a case where we corrected at this town meeting. Again, changes in zoning is very prescribed by law. We have... Don't have a... We can only do what we have authority to do.
Okay. So somebody made a mistake, and you cannot correct it. Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct it at next town meeting.
At the next town meeting, you can correct it to expand this, to include that?
Correct.
It's not going to be a separate thing, which doesn't meet the four lot requirement?
You're talking the fall, the fall town meeting?
We could do it at fall town meeting.
I mean, because considering you're getting a petition going, where we need four, we need at least four parcels?
No, no, no. Because you can add, you can add one parcel to an abutting lot to make one district. You're just taking one property, zoning it completely different from everything else around it. So if this was all village commercial, there's a parcel... Let me finish up. If this is all commercial, zoned village commercial, but there were two parcels or whatever you wanted to add on to it, you could add one or two parcels to an existing district. It's not spot.
What about residential?
If there wasn't a budding residential?
We're all residential here.
If there was a budding residential south of it, you could go the opposite way.
Well, this is residential. This is residential.
Let me finish.
So why can't we make those residential?
Let me finish. If you have two parcels, whatever, two parcels left there that are commercial and a budding district below it is residential, you could change that without two residential, that would be a spot. So one residential lot in the middle surrounded by commercial at this part.
So what...
So this would not be...
No, that is... That is currently... That what you're pointing to, that split lot is now commercial.
But this is still residential of a split lot.
Correct. We're not proposing...
This is residential abutting it, right? This lot here is... This is residential, but the abutting one's... So if I were to take one, two, three, four parcels...
But that parcel above you on the corner.
A hundred signatures and petition the board to change it to residential?
Well, you can go through the full set. We can't fight. That's all.
If I get the orders to agree, everybody wants to be residential, so not perfect, fine. I mean, that's...
It's abutting?
That's a full set, right? I mean, we need the four. We need the budding residential. That's not tonight, though. Yes.
Or if you take zoning change...
Am I not affecting it at all?
Is that the apartment something above?
Yeah, you're up, partner.
Jim Riley, 149 Reservoir Street. I heard a lot about Realtors and investors tonight. I am a Realtor, private profession. Maybe I can shed a little bit of light, because I think some of the planning board's decisions are being made on the zoning maps and not the information that is at the assessor's office.
We have no... Correct. Until we make a decision on zoning maps.
I'm just trying to shed a little light on. The way that as a Realtor, we get information is our MLS system goes into the town and grabs the information on the assessor's department and pulls it into MLS.
Wrong.
So, I'm sorry?
Well, that's proven wrong now.
No, no, I'm not saying. It goes into the assessor's card, field cards. That's where we pull the information. As Realtors, we don't have an automatic system that goes in and pulls information off zoning maps. So when you see people relying on information, they're relying what's on the assessor's field cards. So that's where some of the mistakes are being made. When we do it, we check both. And if we get an inconsistency, we go down and try and reconcile between the two. Uh, the recommendation that I would have for the planning board is, um, prior to voting on it by the town, if you would re-study these lines, in turn, it's not uncommon to be back 400 feet, 500 feet, and not the whole lot. If you were to find inconsistencies, I would hope that you would correct the map prior to voting on it, you know, at the town meeting. Uh, I don't know if that's... It's not certainly something that's, uh, can be voted on. It's not part of the proposal, but I hope you would do your diligence, so just to make sure that what we are voting on at the town meeting is correct. Now, to the issue of what was actually being voted on tonight. Um, village commercial does, just for the people in the room here, village commercial does offer you a lot more options than commercial does, okay? For example, you can be closer to your property line when you build something. So you only have to be 10 feet away from the property line on sidelines, as opposed to something would be, you know, 20 feet or more. So there are additional uses of things you can have in village commercial than that you cannot have in commercial. So as a general statement, it does help you to be rezoned village commercial. My property, when I bought it, was zoned industrial. The town rezoned it village commercial. I was actually in favor of it because it gave me more options. So I had a residential house in an industrial zone. Now I have a residential house in a village commercial zone. I can do a lot more things with it. So I just offer that as... With a couple of facts.
Good. I just want to thank the planning board. You know, this is a scaled-back version of what was proposed last year. And I know the Board of Selectmen agrees with this scaled-back version. And I know we kind of had a lot of discussion about when something was made commercial or wasn't made commercial. And I would say to just think that what you're doing tonight is voting to make something village commercial, not looking that way it was.
Yes, I know. I realize...
I thank you for sharing the impact on everyone on Reservoir Street and keeping it out on Route 140.
Yes, I realize that you did take off the rest of Reservoir Street, but why didn't you finish and take off all of Reservoir Street?
I would just like to make a point to our town manager, Mr. Unis. Um, having heard all of this discussion that revolves around disparities between the building department's information and the assessor's information, do you think you have a job to get that reconciled?
and the assessor's information, do you think you have a job to get that reconciled?
Yes, we'll, we'll be looking at that, you know. Fortunately, we do have a full-time town planner now. It's something we didn't have in town for years and years. And you're seeing what happens when you scale back on things like that. And fortunately now we have a town planner and hopefully we'll have money to go forward in the future to look at all our zoning, look at our maps and get things done professionally, rather than the way they obviously have been done in the past.
Is your job then to go into the assessor's database and fix it?
Well, no, I, but I would like to speak to it at least, because I know this is a conversation. And I, I can't keep you too tight on that, but the assessor and I have been in discussion with SERPED, who is this regional planning agency, with APGO, who is a GIS, geographic information systems consultant group that we already work with, and we will be working to digitize our zoning finally, which means feed it into the computer, tie it to the assessor's database, clear up those inaccuracies in the assessor's database, because we do realize that they are there, but the map supersedes, zoning map supersedes the assessor's database. However, we are going to go back and correct all that information so that we can have parcel-based zones, which we do not have now. We have a map that's colored pencil. So what you're seeing on screen, a map specific to these three zoning proposals I had made by SERPED, they, they've been further technical assistance, but we don't have the capability to house. So what we're going to do is we're going to have, just like we have the assessor's map online, we'll have the zoning layer on there. And I really hope it's going to happen within the next year.
How do we ensure the dimensions are accurate? I mean, a lot of our stuff was hand-drawn back in the day.
So this is the thing about zoning.
And even the, even the entrance to Reservoir Street changed.
Right, but it changed, but zoning changes all the time. This is pretty common to have zoning change. And again, it changes at town meeting, it's officially approved at town meeting, but it, but the world is not the same it was in nineteen forty or fifty. Things change, markets change, people, uses of land has changed, you know? So that's why zoning has to sort of keep pace with what's current.
I mean, but in a lot of towns, I had lived in Alamo before, when I went to get, it said so many feet from granite stone, whatever, marker down to here, that laid out the plots, laid out the, the.
Well, that we just said, we were just looking.
You don't have any of that.
Well, yesterday, we had never had SNAP or funding to do so. So we are now in the process of updating it. We can only go forward at this stage.
Where do they, how, where do we define five hundred fifty feet back from what?
You'd have to go back and read the original zone. We call it, we call it edge of page.
Right, so it's a budding.
Okay.
Well, that's changed from seventy-eight.
I would just like the board to consider removing from the article the parcel abutting in Reservoir Street.
Then it was made commercial. It could be done at town, you need to put a movement, maybe at town meeting also.
I'm making my request. I'm making my request.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. I'm Lucy Federici, four two Mansfield, I have. My, I live on a residential zone, but I had bought Wendy's and the rest of the people's block of land because it was thirty acres that came with the parcel that we bought, we bought in ninety-seven. Now, for years, I, I lost sleep thinking that they were going to move the new CBS to where, you know, we have it, we have the houses now, which is great. But what I'm wondering is, and I knew it was commercial when we bought in ninety-seven.
Yeah.
If it's zoned village commercial and I have residential abutting it, is that actually a more friendly type of zoning, if you will, that keeps it more residential? And you can't get like big industrial in there?
Correct, yeah.
So is it almost more in favor of the people that have homes?
Well, it, it has provisions for design requirements. And so that would be taken, anyone proposing development would have to go through the design requirements.
So the way it is currently now, commercial, the people that have their block of land next to me that has a house, they could bulldoze that down and put in.
Commercial only allows a primary building.
But say they do away with their house. They sell the property, which is five acres.
Right, yeah.
Bulldozes the house down and stick.
Away with it.
Yeah, yeah, well.
Seven eleven.
It would have a permit, but that, that's an allowing.
But it, but it is feasible.
Correct.
So how would that change if it went to village commercial?
Well, village commercial, we have to, like, the drive-throughs have a special permit, they'd have to be granted. So like the Duncan Donuts corner of Freeman Street, that was not allowed a, a special permit for a drive-through. So there's, there's some additional controls in design in the village commercial district.
Because originally those thirty acres were meant to be twenty-one houses. That was supposed to be a large development.
Right.
And it only occurred for five, so that's why there's currently four.
Mr. Unitz?
I can just respond to the request on the property on the corner of Reservoir. I have talked to the owner of that property and they are interested in seeing that property re-zoned to village commercial, so I hope you.
Wheaton College?
Yes.
To village commercial.
Yeah, it's more commercial than what we do. Okay, I think we've.
May I, well, the Realtor brought up a question, which I apologize.
One minute, because we've spilled a bomb.
Thirty seconds. Well, we didn't drag it all, all that long, the middle one took a lot of time too. The Realtor back here brought up a very good point. You said something about ten feet from the property lines in village commercial? So are we right in understanding, and I apologize for throwing this bomb at the end of the night, that it's easier for a business to build on commercial village than it is on commercial?
No, no.
What are their boundaries on commercial?
No, there's different setback requirements for different zones. However, when you come before the board, the board takes into account abutters and, you know, who else is around a proposed development, and takes that all into account if we're granting them a town permit. It's not, it's not like a blanket, you change the zoning and anyone that's what they want. You still have to come before the board with, slightly adding a special permit.
I gather that, but something along the lines of an eight thousand square foot building wouldn't fit on the triangle of Wheaton College land. A seven eleven, a Wendy's, a Dunkin' Donuts, a Popeye's, someone mentioned along the line, would all fit there very conveniently.
Well, but you still would need, see, in village commercial, you need a special permit for a drive-through. So that drive-through, those types of uses.
Well, a seven eleven. All right, I mean, I just want, just to clarify that, thank you very much. We'll look at the dumpsters. Our view would be the dumpsters, the back of the seven eleven.
So if I wanted to put a revision on it, I could do it.
You would have to get a commercial, a zoning board of appeals, because you're insisting on.
Some people put a, told me the dumpster.
But I was a conforming user.
It would be worse.
Your house's grandfather.
It's a bigger footprint, which they couldn't build, they wouldn't have the room for.
That's what this gentleman was saying. Your house's grandfather, but it changes to it.
Okay, so, and this change was made in nineteen ninety-nine?
No, seventy-eight.
No, 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 no.
Zoning.
There were multiple zoning changes, but I was on the, my, my point, and zoning was pure. So you have, you had industrial use, you could have residential, you can't allow all the uses in there.
But at some point, definitions were changed.
Correct.
Shouldn't those people who are affected by those changes have been notified?
They would have been notified through a public hearing process. And it might have been printed on the town.
You mean, it might have been like.
But if you're doing townwide zoning, there's nineteen thousand people live in town. You would have, because on townwide zoning, the notification is through the newspaper and public hearings, I think, so that's, that's the.
So if you didn't get the newspaper in two thousand and three and you didn't drive specifically to town hall and read the bulletin board, you weren't made, you weren't aware.
Just to the audience, I, this is my own opinion. I think that this has come before us because there is no interest in putting commercial use in this area. But there's lots of interest in putting village commercial use in this area.
Well, the gentleman who had the, the Smith Family Trust there was selling commercial in two thousand and six. They haven't got anything built, hadn't sold that property, it's been sales, for sale eighteen acres since two thousand and six.
I'm just saying, I'm just letting, sharing what my opinion is about this. And it's just something to think about.
All right, I think we've a lot to say here. At this stage, I think we need to close the hearing.
We should close the hearing on the zoning, proposed rezoning out of twenty-two, we'll fill that.
Second. No, I'm not closing here. Is that it?
Yes.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I'm also. Do we need a motion?
So you got that map again, cold one?
I'll make a motion to the board, the planning board recommend town meeting with massive draft article three, town vote, and this town zoning by law.
That's where you are right there.
So this is all residential?
Whenever, yeah, this is all residential.
Nineteen ninety-nine, last five, by twenty thirteen, this problem. By change from the first zone, this particular.
Thirteen acres, but you're going to sell this.
Long Mr. Lab, he brings residential.
Residential. I can do that when it's all residential.
Plus minus acres comprising the following parcels of land shown on the.
This person, this is.
Assessor's map. Assessor's map.
And his.
He should be listening to that.
Twenty-five, two thirty-five, two thirty-seven.
Doesn't matter.
I know, but you see this narrow property, that's for, between the two houses, you're. That's where they want to put a call, exactly, three houses, and then they want to put. None of that's official. It's actually, if you go on.
Because it's thirty acres.
Right, if you go on the MLS site. So, it was selling for one point four, nothing better than that. Down to nine hundred ninety-five thousand.
There's a lot of wetlands there.
Awful lot.
In the following parcel, showing the town, the assessor's map, the assessor's map, sixteen parcel two inside.
What is the difference between half sixty, they are eighty?
Yes.
The size of the lot, residential lot, twenty thousand square feet, forty thousand square feet.